Get to spend this time with y'all. Oh, let me let this robot know that I consent to being recorded. So yeah, I'm glad to be here with all of you. As you heard in my introduction, I I am a lawyer with If When How, lawyering for reproductive justice. And the work that we do focuses on using the power of the legal profession and the tools of lawyering to ensure that everybody can self determine their reproductive lives on their own terms with dignity and without fear of punishment from the state or private parties. And a focus of the work that I do is on ensuring that people aren't criminalized for the outcomes of their pregnancies, especially for self managing and abortion. So I want to ground us a little bit in kind of where where we are in the present moment. And then I'll talk to you a little bit about what we are doing at If When How about the about the situation that we find ourselves in. The thing that brings me here today, probably no surprise to folks here is the fact that over fifty year, nearly fifty years of Supreme Court precedent protecting the right to bodily autonomy through seeking an abortion has been overturned by the Supreme Court. And to to sort of give a very basic introductory background to the law of abortion and how it came to be in the United States. You know, people for as long as as human beings have been getting pregnant, have been seeking ways to end unwanted pregnancies, have been seeking ways to prevent pregnancy, to give birth to babies and, you know, all attend to their health needs in a variety of ways. Sometimes on their own, sometimes with the help of trusted healers in their communities. And so, you know, if we look at the the broad arc of history, this reproductive healthcare was provided by community members, very often midwives, herbalists, healers and others. And when, I guess, under the common law or the law that was imposed by colonizers, by the English colonizers, that law really didn't have a whole lot to say about people's reproductive health, their reproductive outcomes, mostly because people with a capacity for pregnancy and birthing weren't considered persons under the law. And so, in a lot of ways, you know, there was sort of a, you know, disregard, I guess, for for anything related to reproductive health under the law. But then about the time of the Civil War, so like the mid eighteen hundreds, medicine be as a practice began to professionalize. And the way that they sought to police the boundaries of what it means to call oneself a physician and to be entitled to provide healthcare in one's community was through the passage of criminal laws that essentially outlawed the practice of medicine, we're going to put that in some quotation marks, the practice of medicine. And they sought to do that specifically targeting reproductive healthcare to drive the midwives and the healers and people who'd been providing healthcare in their communities for for generations and make essentially criminalizing them overnight. So the history of health regulation and the history of of the regulation of abortion in our country is directly related to the history of the criminal legal system. And that, you know, I guess was the the primary enforcer of that. It will probably come as no surprise to any of you that the campaigns that were used to create these criminal abortion laws were explicitly racist. They were explicitly xenophobic. They portrayed people of color, indigenous folks, black people who were enslaved and providing care in their communities as backwards, as dirty, right? All of these things, very, very familiar tropes in order to portray the practice of medicine as essentially like as clean, white and under the light of the law. So it is a deep irony that we find ourselves in a situation now that is essentially a problem of the creation of the healthcare of of professionalized medicine itself, like they called for these laws. There was no such thing as an anti abortion movement before that. It was sort of a a something that that sprung up at that point. And so, up until Roe, many states had these criminal abortion laws that were targeted at providers of abortion care. And then what Roe did, you know, just to give a very shorthand of like what Roe signified was the idea that the that it violated an individual's fundamental rights for the state to regulate healthcare providers in a way that made healthcare inaccessible to people. So the, you know, it's sort of very basic description of what Roe stood for was the idea that people have a right that is based in a right to privacy. Unfortunately, not a right to health, not, you know, fundamental human rights that, you know, that that we look to. That people have this privacy based right to make decisions about their own bodies, to self determine their own lives and seek abortion care. And that the state couldn't impose an undue burden on that right. And that was all essentially swept away this summer in Dobbs versus Jackson Women's Health Organization. And what that case did was essentially unwind all of that. And see, there isn't a constitutional right. There was never a constitutional right. And that case was egregiously wrong when it was decided. So what that does is it opens the door for states to to limit and control access to abortion in virtually any way they want to. And in some states, that, you know, the concern is that some states will go so far as to criminalize people who seek abortions. We're gonna, we're gonna put a pin in that and come back to it in in just a moment. But essentially, what has happened now is that the 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 constitutional floor has dropped out from below all of us who are relying on these rights. And states have reverted, well, first of all, there has been a race to the bottom in states to impose more and more draconian penalties on people who provide abortion care and people who help others in accessing abortion care. And it also means that many states have reverted back to laws that were passed in the eighteen hundreds, right, like very antiquated laws that are not clear in their application as to whether or not they're intended to criminalize people who self manage their abortions, people who have abortions. So where we are today in the present day, unfortunately, so even though the law in the vast majority of states does not permit criminalizing people for self managing and abortion, you know, for for ending a pregnancy, whether they have an abortion or end their own pregnancy. People have in fact been criminalized. And again, this should come as no surprise to people who are familiar with the criminal legal system that once prosecutors have decided that they want to punish somebody for something, they will find a law to seek their purpose, whether or not the law explicitly allows it. So I'm going to drop into the chat some a resource that we just published, preliminary findings from a study that we've conducted looking at all cases that we could find from the year two thousand until twenty twenty. That's sort of the bracket of our data set of people who've been criminally prosecuted for self managing and abortion or for helping somebody else do so. Because as I mentioned before, as long as people have been getting pregnant, people have been looking for ways to end pregnancies. And even while Roe was in place, people were looking for ways to self manage abortions, either because abortion was inaccessible in fact, or because they preferred to self manage an abortion. You know, whether that was because they felt pushed out of the healthcare system by experiences of racism, transphobia, you know, all the things that would push people out of healthcare systems, whether that's individually or as a part of their community, or because people would prefer to self manage because they wanted a more private, more self directed experience. And we found sixty one instances in which somebody had been criminally prosecuted. The a a major proportion of them, nearly half, were turned over to law enforcement by the very people they turned to for help. So people who had self managed abortion experienced a complication and then went to healthcare providers were turned over either by healthcare providers themselves or other hospital personnel, like social workers. And then, you know, again, like no surprises here, what we found, the overwhelming majority of people who were ensnared in these criminal prosecutions were people who are already experiencing marginalization, whether that's on the basis of race, vulnerable immigration status or poverty. And so we have this really perfect storm where people who are who are marginalized by health systems, so are more likely to be unable to access abortion care in the form of medical system and are also more likely to experience adverse pregnancy outcomes that would bring them under the the sort of suspicion of either healthcare providers or law enforcement and also make them more susceptible to being targeted and surveilled by the criminal legal system, by the family regulation system, by other sort of punitive and surveilling systems that we have in place. We now have this like intersection point where people's reproductive outcomes have become yet another way to control, criminalize and punish. So just to to wrap up very briefly, now that I'm just about at my time. So as I mentioned before, we try to use all of the tools that are available to us as lawyers. So we run a legal hotline, the reprolegalhelpline.org, where people can reach out and actually talk to an attorney and find out more about the legal landscape in their state, the risks that they might face related to self managed abortion, just get legal information about abortion generally. We can connect them to legal services if they are threatened with prosecution, if they're interrogated by law enforcement. We can provide them that legal support, connect them to attorneys in their jurisdiction. Our litigation team provides criminal defense and criminal defense support. We also advocate both proactively and defensively for policy to ensure that nobody finds himself in this situation in the first place. So we both, we've had success both with repealing laws that have been used to criminalize people for self managing abortions and also with proposing laws that create protections to ensure first that people can't be criminalized and second that if they are, that they can seek accountability through the civil courts and seek redress for the harms that have been done to them. And then the last piece of our work, the research, which you have a link to here, looking at what the cases actually look like, how how these cases have come up so that we can anticipate both on the policy and the litigation front. And then also looking deeply at the intersections between mandatory reporting and healthcare privacy and and self managed abortion to help educate healthcare providers on how they can work to keep their patients safe from criminalization. So that's a very brief overview of the work that we're doing around the criminalization of abortion and trying to end it. And I look forward to the rest of this conversation.
Thank you, Farah. Super appreciate you sharing all of that. And yeah, looking forward to the to the conversation continuing. And I'm passing off to Catherine. You are to chat about the way criminalization happens in schools.
Hi, folks. Glad to be here with all of you. Everyone can kind of hear me, okay? All right. So I guess just to start, I'm using a second screen here to see all of you. So if you kind of see me looking over this way, I just wanted to say that that's why. But my name is Catherine. I use she her pronouns. I'm a postdoctoral fellow in the Department of Epidemiology and Population Health at Stanford. And my role as a researcher in that role, my work documents the health effects of structural racism as it's kind of materialized through education and legal system, policy and practice. And in particular, I look at punishment within these institutions as a tool of systems like structural racism that has implications for health and for health inequity. And so today I was asked to talk about the ways that young people are criminalized in their school spaces, how that's been linked to health and public health research and how folks are organizing to disrupt those practices in their schools. So just to kind of start off by orienting us all to what we mean when we talk about how young people are criminalized in their schools. Because generally, when folks think about the institution of education, they usually aren't imagining a system designed to punish. And yet, in a lot of ways, how punishment operates in schools, the kind of policies that shape it, who it targets, what it interrupts, its consequences in people's lives, these are all very reflective of how punishment operates in the legal system. And sometimes this comparison is a more literal one. For example, half of US schools have armed law enforcement on their campuses and use other types of surveillance systems like video cameras and metal detectors. But it also shows up in ways that have been even more normalized through the kind of restrictive, physical exclusionary tactics of punitive school discipline. Things like using suspension and expulsion to remove students from their classrooms or from their schools altogether. And these practices are often justified as a means of both accountability for or preventing future perceived misbehaviors or to ensure student safety. Though research to that end consistently finds that they not only fail to achieve these goals, but they perpetuate interpersonal and structural harms. So for example, policing young people in their schools, pushing students out of schools altogether, facilitating their targeting by the legal system. But despite all of this, school discipline not only continues to be a common experience for students in US schools, it also exacerbates other systems of structural marginalization with black, Latinx, indigenous, LGBTQIA and disabled young people at greater risk for targeting. We see this as early as even preschool, for example, with black children in particular monitored more closely for perceived misbehavior, targeted more often for discipline and punished more severely than white students. And these kind of inequities persist across grade levels, independent of student behavior. So with schools as these, you know, foundational environments in young people's lives from the overall time spent in schools to the relationships with friends and teachers that are nourished there, the communities that are built there and so much more, you can imagine that these kinds of punitive practices that disrupt access to these environments may have implications for health. And we do find that that is the case. So if you look across all of the studies of punitive school discipline and health, you'll find that a majority like experiencing punitive discipline with adverse health across a variety of physical, mental and behavioral health outcomes throughout someone's lifetime. So both immediately as well as into older adulthood. And those studies that specifically look at the experience of structural marginalization consistently provide evidence that punitive school discipline in its disproportionate targeting of students contributes to inequities in these health outcomes. So in terms of what people are and have been doing to disrupt these practices, there are several examples, especially over these past years, of students and their families, communities, educators throughout the country organizing to shift away from punitive approaches in schools and invest in different approaches, better equipped to achieve school safety, health and well being. And some examples that are more more local to me here in the Bay Area that resulted from years long efforts coordinated by the Black Organizing Project in Oakland, you know, showing up to school board meetings, coordinating folk folks throughout the community, getting sign on letters in support to end the use of punitive discipline in schools. Was that a few years back, Oakland Unified School District implemented a policy to ban particular categories of suspension that have been shown to disproportionately target black and Latinx students. And in addition to this ban, organizers advocated for and won dedicated resources, including a funding commitment from OUSD's superintendent to invest in restorative justice and other programming. And then more recently in twenty twenty, they organized around and won the passage of the George Floyd Resolution, which brought about the dissolution of the internal Oakland Unified School District Police Department and a repurposing of those funds for student supports and resources. And so kind of through these efforts and efforts like this throughout the country, we're seeing this continued challenge and a demand that more of the conversations across the policy and practice landscape in US schools at the state level and beyond kind of adopt and move in these same ways. So I think to kind of close here, I would say I hope some of the core ideas that you take away from this are that punishment in schools does not achieve its stated goals of ensuring safety and well being, that it's a pathway through which young people and especially structurally marginalized young people are criminalized in their school spaces, that it's associated with adverse health, both immediately as well as into older adulthood. And finally, that just as these kinds of systems and structures marginalize people, so too do individuals organize and movement build to resist and shift those structures. So there are health affirming alternatives, folks are actively implementing to maintain school connectedness, to maintain safety and to maintain well being that are deeply aligned with both abolitionist organizing and public health's shared commitments of investing in the social determinants of health. So I'll just stop there. And thank you.
Catherine, thanks for sharing all of that. Thanks for your work. Next, I'm going to pass it off to Zaire. And again, thanks for being here. So exhausted. I'll hand it off to you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Zaire. Feel a little nervous right now. Got Stanford and everybody up in here, so I'm a little nervous. My name is Zaire. I work with TGJP. Oh, I use he, you know, pronouns. A little about me and the work that I'm doing. I was formerly incarcerated for thirty years. I've been out for almost two years now. And I will have to say that I started, I got an internship with TGJP. And what I liked about TGJP is that it that it brings a crisis, I want how I want to work this. I like it that we cause a crisis for the conscience. Like, I like that we cause a crisis for the conscious, for the public, for for political advocacy. And I am advocate warrior, a political political warrior. If I see injustice, I want to see, I will fight to the bitter end for justice. We at TGJP work with legal. As far as legal, if someone has a legal issue that's inside or outside, it doesn't matter what state, we're reaching out for trans to fight. We provide housing for trans individuals. I think we're probably the only one in San Francisco area that has these services. So we provide housing, work work with wraparound services. When I say wraparound services, if anyone's coming out or has needs, we'll take them from the beginning to look like what it looks like at the end. That's from housing to providing documents from state ID, birth certificate, social security card, navigating transportation, navigating employment, housing and just mental health, basic needs that is needed upon coming out. Also, I have personally started a parole preparation program that helps trans who's or who has indeterminate sentence, who have to go in front of a panel to prepare them for that, because that's a unique experience in itself, also with being trans. And I have collaborated with a law firm who will take these individuals pro bono to their hearing. As far as political, like if there's a political issue, like we're there. So I'm not just can say solely just one, like if there's a political issue that is affecting any trans or gender, we're there for the fight. We also have a reentry program for people coming out for housing and the services that I had said earlier. Advocating, I'm kind of jumping around, like advocating for rights like I have said in many times speaking, growing up, like how is me being me hurting anybody if I'm not hurting it, imposing on their boundaries? Or they're like, if I'm not directly harming them? So how is me being trans hurting anyone? So I think that's what motivates me as far as my lived experience in my past. Like, how can someone with a heartbeat, with a spirit, that just want to be them hurt anyone? So then we have people who believes their belief system, like trans is, we shouldn't exist or something's wrong with us. Like, and I think it might have been Wisconsin. They had just passed a bill where you can't even say gay or or trans, you'll get in trouble for that. So those are things like I'm fighting for. Why is public health important? I think it might have been Sarah that shared in the big big first, if I'm not mistaken. I thought it was very interesting because I just came back from like a work conference. And there was transgender men and we were talking about abortions. And how does it if it's just doesn't affect just the cis woman affects affects F F to M, who who maybe want to have reproduction or maybe harmed and that we don't longer have that right. Also thought it was interesting when we talked about, that she was talking about abortion. Because like, I care for human rights and women and women have every right to her body. So that's something, you know, I'm starting to be passionate to jump on the fight for. I think that's all I have to say right now.
Thank you, Zaire. Appreciate it. And then the last bit of personal least, I'm passing off to you.
Thanks, everyone. Can you hear me? Okay? Okay, Graham, actually, I have a few slides, so I'm going to just share my screen. Bear with me. So my name is is Jules Netherlands and I use she, her or they, them pronouns. And I'm just going to talk to you real briefly about decriminalizing personal possession of drugs. And what I'm hoping to convince you of in my short time is that the war on drugs is really a pretext for criminalizing people, but not all people, right? Just certain kinds of people. And beyond that, I I want to suggest that it's not just that we're pulling people into the criminal legal system, but that we use the war on drugs actually to criminalize people through a host of other kinds of civil systems. So the Drug Policy Alliance is a national organization working to end the war on drugs. And our main goal is to get the criminal legal system out of the business of drug policy altogether. So why are we focused on decriminalization of possession? Because it's it's a tool that's used to sweep tons of people into the criminal legal system, the leading cause of arrest in the United States. One point five million people were arrested in twenty nineteen on drug, twenty nineteen on drug law violations. And of course, unfortunately, these are incredibly racially disparate. And so when I say like drugs are a pretext for for criminalizing certain kinds of people, like no, you know, it's not just that people of color are arrested at greater rates, it's that we criminalize certain kinds of drugs, right, that are associated with certain groups of people. So nobody's criminalizing my caffeine, right? Nobody's criminalizing alcohol anymore or nicotine. And frankly, those substances cause far more death than many of the so called illicit substances. But it's not just that we're pulling people into the criminal legal system. It harms people throughout their throughout their lives. If you have a criminal record, it can impact your housing, your employment, your public benefits, your immigration status, the outcome of a child welfare or family regulation case and and education. So I'm not going to go through all of this, but we have a program called Uprooting the Drug War. You can see that you are all there URL below. And it sort of walks through all of the ways that the drug war is being used, not again, not just to criminalize people, but to prevent them from accessing services that are meant to help people. So I wanted to sort of walk through this a little bit because you don't even have to have a drug conviction to be harmed by these systems. So we're doing some work right now and sort of trying to scope out these sort of vicious cycles. So we have, on the one hand, the needs of people who use drugs that may go to any number of social service systems to get help. It could be public benefits, it could be a healthcare setting. And what because of what we would call sort of drug war logic that we somehow have to find out if people are using drugs and police them. A lot of these systems are using forms of surveillance to identify people who use drugs, most commonly drug testing. This happens in schools too, right, that we sometimes randomly drug test students. Of course, the more that you're surveilling and looking for drug use, the more you find it. And then that intensifies other kinds of state institutional interventions, right? So but here's an example, you might go to child protective services of the child welfare system because you actually need help or someone identifies that you need help on your behalf. And then if you are drug tested or suspected of drug use, that can trigger a whole range of really unfortunate consequences, including losing custody of your children. So again, the very systems that are designed to help end up hurting people. So what are we doing about it? So Drug Policy Alliance with a lot of other people on the ground in Oregon had a ballot measure to decriminalize personal possession of drugs in Oregon. So that was, so just basically it removes criminal penalties for possession of drugs below a certain threshold. In addition, it allocated millions and millions of dollars for a range of social services. So these are some of the provisions of the of the measure, it's called Measure One Ten. But essentially, in addition to removing the criminal penalties, it provides voluntary referrals for services in the community. But beyond that, it infuses hundreds of millions of dollars into social service programs ranging from harm reduction to housing to drug treatment. The idea being that rather than criminalizing and penalizing people, we should in fact actually be helping them. So we're actually two years out from the passage of the measure, but one year out from its implementation and it's very early to say how effective it's been. But we know already that over sixteen thousand people have accessed services and sixty percent of those were accessing harm reduction services. We also know that there's been a precipitous drop in drug related arrests since implementation, which of course is one of the primary goals. which of course is one of the primary goals. And, uh, there's been 30 million already awarded and 270 million additional dollars that are actually being distributed right now to build up the social service infrastructure in Oregon, uh, which had one of the worst social service systems for helping people who are drug involved. So that's some of what we're doing. I'm going to switch gears just a tiny bit here to talk, put on my other hat because I run our Department of Research and academic engagement. And so for those of you who are in the field of research, I want to talk a little bit about some of the work we're doing around community-driven research. So when we passed Oregon, we knew it was going to be very, very closely watched because it's the first measure of its kind in the country. And so the question is, what does success look like? But more importantly, who gets to say, right? Whoever defines what success is can, can determine whether or not this is a successful measure. So we can see right this headline here that people have already saying it's failed. This was like a year out before any of the money had been let into the community. Um, and then here about a little later, maybe it's working, we don't know. So what we did was work with people on the ground in Oregon to really consult with people who are directly impacted by the measure, people who use drugs, people that are, have been involved in the criminal legal system, and ask them to help us define metrics. I'm not going to have time to go through all of this, but this is just sort of laying out. The, the problem we were trying to solve was really research and evaluations of the measure that would take a lot of stuff out of context and wouldn't be talking directly to people on the ground in Oregon, which is, which is a thing that happens all the time. So we convened a steering committee, again, those, those people directly impacted and, and experts in Oregon, um, and then did a series of interviews with people on the ground. And we asked them, how do you want to see the evaluation take shape? Like, what are the, what are the things that are important to you? And how would you consider this decriminalization measure of success? Like, what does success mean to you? Um, and so they came up with a bunch of principles and a bunch of metrics. And I'm just going to like breeze through these, but if you're interested, I'm happy to share the document. They obviously wanted to center themselves in the evaluation. They wanted to make sure that it was comprehensive and multifaceted. That they were, were going to be conducted by informed research with relevant experience. They didn't want like, you know, people that hadn't given this any thought, just to sort of show up in Oregon and start evaluating it. A thing that has unfortunately happened. Uh, that they would be inclusive and include a range of, of data. They didn't want it to just focus on individual behavior change, but they wanted to see how the measure was impacting these broader systems. Using unstigmatizing language and they wanted, right? The data and the results to be transparent and accessible to a wide range of stakeholders. So I think I'm going to pause you this and then they, they came up with, I'm not kidding you, 75 metrics of what success would look like in Oregon. And these are just the key domains. And so I will not go into all of those. But I will stop there and turn it over if I can figure out how to stop sharing, which I'd really like to do. I'm going to figure that out, or maybe one of the hosts can help me with that.
Yeah, I think at the top of your.
Sorry to rush through that, but I'm happy to turn it over to others.
Thank you. Um, will y'all up here now? Cool. Okay. So yes, folks, please keep dropping your questions in the chat. While we do that, just want to kick off with a question to all of you. Which is like a huge question, so feel free to not give a comprehensive answer, but whatever, you know, whatever your thoughts are. What would you like to see the field of public health take on with regards to abolition, decriminalization, the work that y'all do? Maybe we can go in the same order that you spoke. There, Minister.
Um, yeah, I don't know. I mean, I don't have an answer to that question. And the reason I don't is because the work of reproductive justice of ensuring that people can, can decide whether to carry a pregnancy to term, avoid pregnancy, give birth and raise their children in healthy and safe environments is fundamentally a public health question. So it's like, it almost, it's like a syntax error, like why should public health be involved in reproductive justice? Like, it is inherently and, and like intrinsically. You know, I think that maybe if there was some place that I want to see or like, or I am happy to see activism is around understanding these as human rights issues, uh, you know, coming at this as a lawyer within deeply flawed systems. Um, you know, the ability of us across sectors, across, you know, professions and all of that to really like embrace these as human rights issues and make those demands of the state, which I think is, you know, fundamentally like what, what public health is about, right? Is saying that like there is a collective responsibility, um, you know, to the well-being of individuals, but to the well-being of the collective as well. And I, this is all part and parcel with reproductive justice. And reproductive justice can't exist in a context in which we can lock people up, not just because of their reproductive outcomes, but where, you know, we are literally like removing people from their communities. If we're doing that during their reproductive lifespans, you know, we're, we're interrupting their ability to self-determine their reproductive lives. We're removing them from their families, right? Reproductive justice is not about, not just about what is in or comes out of your uterus, but it's also about how, um, you know, who you form a family with, how you love and how we form those connections. So these things are like inextricably linked.
Yeah, um, thank you for this question. I, I appreciate this question because I think it's probably intentionally broad or big picture. So that we each kind of go in different direction with it and demonstrate the many things that public health can be doing with regard to, to abolition. So I think given what I was asked to speak on today, the direction I'll go with it is what should public health researchers be taking on when it comes to abolition? And that brings to mind a few things, and I'm sure the more I think about this, the more it will bring up. But I think first and foremost, it's explicitly recognizing the rootedness of our work in that of movement builders, that so much of the production of research documenting the health effects of policing and systems of punishment were born of the movements that have and continue to demand that everyone pay attention and mobilize around this. You know, that research is one way of knowing about and documenting the impacts of these systems, but it was not the first way and it's not the only way. And I think it also means recognizing and truly internalizing the shared commitments of abolition in public health and reflecting that and how we think about what questions we should be asking in our work, how we think about the results we're finding in our work, how we're making recommendations from our work to build across and coordinate efforts and imagining and realizing the world we actually all deserve to live in, where everyone has everything that they need to live full and healthy lives. Um, and I think it also means realizing that our contributions need not just be that of documenting health effects, that we're not just people who do research, but we're people who live in communities and we're making decisions each day to invest in or divest from systems and structures. So there are other ways that we can show up to actualize that world.
I think you already touched on this in your talk a little bit, but if you have any other thoughts to share.
I'm going to have to say like, that's a very big question that you, that's a very big question that you asked. When we talk about abolition, I strongly afford the dismantling of the prison systems. So that's one catch, but so I believe in restorative justice over retribution and transform, transformative justice. However, I am on a public health board to bring awareness to trans health. Because inside, when incarcerated, there's just a cookie cutter approach to helping trans. It's either you see this, you see the psychiatrist, they say, yes, you have a dysphoria and they put you on hormone treatments and two weeks, I mean, two, two weeks before your appointment, you will take a blood lab work and if it's okay, you just continue on. And I think there's a, is a bigger approach that needs to be addressed when it comes to public health. When we talk about surgeries, SRS surgeries for alignment, like every, everybody's not cookie cutter. So that needs to be addressed. We need to talk about trick treatment plans to better help serve individuals that's incarcerated. Mental health and then when we talk about reproductions, like they don't, when you have a hysterectomy or, you know, you're transitioning, no one asks you, do you want to save your eggs? Or, or do they actually, do you want to save your sperm for reproduction? So it's a, like I said, that's a broad question. So, but I am fighting for the mental health and healthcare for trans rights right now.
There's a good shit, yeah, that whole range of thoughts.
Yeah, I mean, I think a couple of, a couple of quick thoughts about this. I think for me, it, when we think about the role of public health and abolition, it's, it's recognizing that it's not just about abolishing the criminal legal system, that there are these punitive logics that have infiltrated, right? These other systems that are supposed to be helping, including public health, frankly, right? So that we've seen, right, for some of the other speakers, how that happens in education, right? And in healthcare. And so I think it's about really critically interrogating those systems and rooting out like where those punitive logics are, have taken hold and just being super critical about that. I'm actually going to drop a link to an article that sort of lays out how some of these logics show up, especially in, in healthcare. This is around the drug war in particular. And then the other thing is just to echo what, what Catherine said. Part of my job, which I love, is working with researchers and academics to essentially radicalize them. To be, to be like, you know what, listen, and I say this as someone with a PhD, like they, they often will feed us, right, a whole load of garbage about objectivity and, you know, you have to be neutral. And, you know, and what I want to say to it is like, we're not living in an era where we can afford to be neutral. You know, and so I would just say for those of you who are in the research field, and this is easier said than done, because I know a lot of the institutions that you're in have different kinds of incentive structures and penalties when you do this kind of stuff. But to the extent that you can, right, to really engage in the processes of, of reform. And the fact that you're taking a class like this indicates that you're probably already on board with that. But the things that they don't teach you in school, right, about how do you advocate for change? How do you talk to the media if that's a tool of change? How do you do community organizing? How do you work in partnership with the communities that are directly impacted by the issues that you care about? Right? How do you share power in those situations, right? Those are all, I think, really important questions for those of us that are coming at this with more of an academic or, or research background.
Yeah, but you're not living in an era where we can be neutral. Yeah. Solid, solid takeaway. A few questions are coming in, so I'll ask those, please continue to drop your questions in the chat. Jules, there's a logistical question about whether you would share the slides that you.
Sure.
Um, great. So, okay, so the first question, this is directed towards Farah, but I think maybe some of you might have thoughts on this. Other than Farah too. So the question is, as a public health researcher, I'm seeing, especially at the local level in the Gulf South, more and more policies being passed that directly negatively impact people's health and safety. I've also lost faith in our court systems to protect the rights of citizens from these policies and their harmful effects. Do you believe that meaningful positive change can still be enacted through the legal system at this point, the way it exists now? And if not, are the changes that need to be made possible through?
Yeah, so, um, I mean, the brief answer is, is it possible to make the changes that need to be changed through the legal system as it exists now? Like, no, no, absolutely not. I think that the court has told us as much, right? Like, I mean, in just the issues that I work on, but also in so many other issues related to rights of people accused of crimes, you know, rights, just people's basic privacy rights. Like, there, the, the trend has unmistakably been towards a diminishing of people's rights and essentially toward upholding a white Christian nationalist vision of what our country should look like. You know, one that is inherently and explicitly excluding many, many communities of people. Um, so I think that, no, we can't count on the courts. Uh, I think that it's, it was possibly a lesson for the reproductive rights field. I do think that there is hope for change at, that, you know, in the state, in the states, in municipalities. But I think that the way out of this, you know, this, whatever this is, gestures wildly is a, is a political way out and that we have to be attentive to ways that we can build political power, build solidarity. I'm not here to tell people like you need to just like vote and vote harder, like that's, you know, like, yes. And we also need to undo the systematic disenfranchisement, gerrymandering, all of these things that keep people from effectively wielding political power, build strong coalitions, cross movements, you know, this is why it's so important and exciting for me to be in conversation with abolitionists about reproductive justice issues, because we have to find ways to build cause in common with everybody we can, even people we don't necessarily agree with, because the great, that there is such a greater danger lurking. Somebody asked me today, like, what happens if there's a Republican trifecta in 2024? And I was like, I can't like incomprehensible, like incomprehensibly horrible, not just for abortion, but for so many other things. So, um, so yes, but it is like not, it is not like sexy work of civil rights litigation. Although, and I'm not, I'm not like a legal nihilist. I think, you know, there has been important changes made, the civil rights movement, like there were important gains through the courts then. But now the work is that of like community meetings and knocking on doors and like meeting people and, and building solidarity that way, like between, between human beings.
Thanks, Farah, yeah. Um, does anyone else want to answer that, whether you think change is possible through the legal system as it exists? And if not, what changes are possible with the avenues we have?
Okay. I would just add really quickly, um, you know, there are folks that in kind of organizing around school discipline are still pushing for policy changes and we're seeing those be implemented at different local levels, at different state levels. We're seeing people introduce those kinds of changes through proposed legislation at federal levels. Whether folks are receptive to that right now is a different conversation, but people are still pushing at those margins. Um, and just to echo what folks have already said, a lot of the work is really happening more locally and, you know, through organizing, through kind of other means to make sure that that pressure stays consistent and that those movements continue pushing for, for that change.
We got a couple of questions here for Jules. One is timely to the season. The question is, a lot of local media in my city of New Orleans and other cities also are printing police press releases with regards to the Sentinel and Halloween candy stories. So what are your thoughts on how this media story impacts the work being done to decriminalize drug use?
Yeah, thanks for that question. It's actually really damaging. And every time one of those, you know, they're called drug scares, right? And they're, they happen all the time. Every time that happens, I have to drop everything I'm doing and my team has to drop everything we're doing and respond. And so they're very destructive and they're, you know, I don't, I don't know that the, there's malicious intent by the media. I think it's just, that's what sells papers, is that kind of hysteria and hype. And so as critical as I am on the one hand of research, I am also really committed to like making sure that we get accurate information out, especially in the media. And so that's a lot of what we have to do, right, is to counter all that bullshit, pardon my French, with like, with actual factual information. The other thing I would say about that is that it's, media is so powerful, right? Like, peer-reviewed journal articles are awesome, but media is what people are reading for the most part, right? And so it's why I really urge people to become local media experts. And we do a whole training on that and I'm happy to share some resources about it. But you all need to be the people that the, that the press is calling when stories like that come out. You know, not these like scare-mandering kind of bullshitters, like people that actual accurate information. You know, not these, like, scare-mongering kind of bullshitters, like people with actual accurate information. And then one last thing I'll just say about the rainbow fentanyl stuff in particular is, this is when I, like, have a full blossoming academic research crush, because I was trying to respond to these stories, and I found this guy who studied, what he calls it, Halloween sadism, these stories of, like, poison in candy from 1954 through 2012. He looked at all of the media reports of Halloween sadism, and not one was substantiated. Like, not one. And I was like, thank you, Joel Best, who I've never heard of, for devoting your entire research career to answering this question, so that I can now refer reporters to you. So, anyway, just hat tip to Joel Best and any of you who want to get into that kind of research. Most of those drug scare stuff, it, it's rarely substantiated, and it creates a lot of confusion and misinformation. When there are actual dangers, right, of substances, we know that, but it really muddies the water when we get stories like this.
Thanks, Jules. I want to open this question up to, to other folks. Not specifically about the Halloween candy, unless you want to talk about that, but just about how, like, media narrative has either helped or harmed the work that you're doing with the communities you're doing at best. If anybody wants to answer that. Nothing there. Okay. Um. Cool. So I want to read out this shout out to Zaire. I really appreciate Zaire naming very specific moments along the care and treatment process where punishment and austerity logics diminish the quality and quantity of health services that trans and gender variant people rely on. So thanks for sharing that, Zaire. Cool. Okay. So again, this question is directed towards Jules, but I feel like other folks can, can answer this and sort of like, how are you, how are you working with communities and affected people, both on policy change and on research? So, yeah, maybe, Jules, starting with you, specifically the question about evaluating the Oregon law, but yeah, then I'll open it up, I think, for other folks, too, because I feel like that's an important question, just in general.
Yeah, thanks. I, I won't go into too much depth. I mean, we've done this with a couple of different evaluation issues. This was one, we did one around safe consumption spaces or supervised injection facilities. You may have heard, sometimes they're called overdose prevention centers, places where people can go and inject drugs under supervision, so they don't have to worry so much about risk of overdose. And so we've done it different, different ways for different issues, but it's essentially, it's, it's figuring out some kind of methodology to, to partner with the people who are going to be directly impacted by the policy that you're trying to evaluate. You know, so in Oregon, we did that through a series of interviews. It was, because it was during the height of COVID. And so we would have rather had done something in person, but we ended up doing a series of Zoom and phone interviews where we had a guided, you know, sort of a guided interview and talked to people about, you know, what would success look like for you? Because in, in my field in drugs, usually the metric of success is abstinence from drugs. And that's usually not what people who use drugs care about. Some do, but a lot of them care more, more about, like, am I going to stay out of prison? What's the quality of my life? Is my family going to be disrupted, you know, like, are the cops going to find other reasons to arrest me? You know, so they, those are the kinds of issues that people raised, you know? Will I still be stigmatized when I seek healthcare, right? So you get very different kinds of evaluation metrics when you ask people directly impacted than you do if you're a researcher sitting in a room trying to create a survey instrument. I'm going to drop a link to an article we wrote about this project. And I think in that article, there's a link to the full set of metrics, was, like I said, it was like 75 metrics. The other thing I will say is that people on the ground have a much keener sense of what, what the confounders are, like, what could, what could mess with the evaluation? So for instance, in Oregon, they really wanted researchers to figure out the impact of COVID in, in how that was going to impact decrem, but also the fact that fentanyl was just starting to get into the drug supply in Oregon right around the same time that, that the decrem initiative was implemented, right? And so overdoses actually went up after implementation, even though we know from Portugal and some European countries that have decrem that most decrem is associated with a decrease in overdose. So there's just a lot of different kinds of things you can learn when you talk to people that are directly impacted. And then if you're, if people are really interested in this topic, we just completed a four-series webinars sort of conference on community-driven research that had a lot of really good ideas, and we're publishing some best practices from that for people that want to know more about that. It's, I think, a pretty hot topic right now in general, but I'd love to hear from other people about their processes for community engagement.
I can go next. I think Jules gave a lot of really great examples of that kind of direct engagement around a particular kind of research effort. I think it can also show up in ways that may be less perceptible to folks around. So I'm thinking about things like, you know, there are young folks who are organizing out of LAUSD to try to dissolve the police department there, the school-based police department. And they kind of put a shout out on Twitter saying, you know, this, we're up before the school board, we're getting pushback, saying that there isn't evidence to support that this would actually be safer and more healthy for young people in schools. And does anyone have evidence to, to that effect? And so there are opportunities there to just on Twitter be engaged in kind of, in these kinds of ways to say, like, here's something that we've been working on for quite some time that can be actually useful in this situation. So I think there's, there's kind of subtler ways that that shows up, too, where folks are just coming together around specific issues to kind of leverage the, our kind of collective efforts to, to see that.
Sarah, is there any thoughts on, like, best practices, the ways that you engage with the communities that you're working with?
Best practice that we engage with? I know that we do a lot through, like, our, spreading the word through Facebook, directly direct, direct actions, hands-on approach, going to City Hall, going to wherever there is needed to spread our word. Oh, wait, it just passed. My thoughts had just passed. I mean, we do not, my organization do not believe, like, in calling the police whatsoever. We do not call the police. But we will show up, advocate, fight. Like I said, Facebook, direct action, speaking engagements, we just advocate for what, whatever the cause is, we're right, right there.
So, I mean, we're not public health researchers in the typical sense of the word. I think the things that I would want to underscore are the fact that communities conduct their own public health research, and then very often, we're just trying to keep up with where the community is. And so, you know, just to raise one example, is, you know, sort of, community, public health research, and also harm reduction at the same time. You know, the fact that we even know that people can have abortions with pills using misoprostal is through like, the, the work of individual community members in Brazil. People with capacity for pregnancy, they're realized that misoprostal, which was marketed as an ulcer preventative medication, had a warning on it, said, do not use, pregnant can cause pregnancy loss. And so, you know, community members themselves figured out how to use the medications, what safe dosages were, and pass that information among each other in a context in which abortion care was heavily restricted. So, you know, they had over-the-counter access to these medications, but abortion was restricted. And, you know, the only way that people discovered that this happened, or like, that the, I guess, like, formal health system discovered this was happening was because the rate of people dying unnecessary deaths from, from clandestine abortions started to go down. So it's like, you know, we realize, like, fewer people are dying, these unnecessary deaths, what's going on? And it turned out that people on their own, community members, had discovered this information or passing it from person to person. And the sort of sad coda to that is that, once more formal, like, academic research started looking at these practices and, and, you know, sort of raised them in the spotlight, then the Brazilian government took those medications away from being over-the-counter access to being by prescription only, which meant that then people were not able to freely access the medications in the way they had been. And so the rates of, of, again, unnecessary deaths from unsafe abortions started to increase. So I think it speaks not only to the power of communities' ability to tend to their own healthcare needs, to reduce harm from the state, and, and to, you know, sort of create, generate knowledge on their own. It also speaks to the need to be responsible and protect the safety, you know, whether that is, like, the safety of the individuals, the safety from the state of people, you know, with whom you're partnering research. So in instances where we've done research, we try to be extremely cautious in, you know, what type of information we collect, how we hold that information, knowing that many people, you know, risk criminalization because of their, because of their health, because they're supporting other people in their health needs. So, yeah, I want to make sure that that's something that the people come away with, like, that is at this point, because of the intensification of criminalization around people's reproductive lives, like, there is no, like, it, I don't know, like, we're, we're not joking around, like, people need to be very cautious with, with this information, because it can really risk harm to people.
Thank you all for your answers to that one. Um. Okay, last question, and again, it's directed toward Jules, but I am going to expand a little bit. So, Jules, the question is, I think, you know, harm reduction means something very specific in, in drug use, substance use world, so the question for you is, if you talk about the harm reduction efforts in your area, the history of it, how it changes, and the accessibility of those services, and then so the rest of y'all can know what questions coming your way. It's sort of just like, thinking, how do you, how do you hold this tension between harm reduction, right, so like, materially making things better, improving conditions for people, which sometimes does funnel more money into personality and personal systems and abolition? How do you, how do you hold those things?
Sure. Well, I, yeah, I mean, it actually sort of follows on stuff that Farrah was just talking about in terms of, the history of harm reduction was, you know, people who use drugs coming together, trying to save each other's lives, and it's, at its root, that's still what's going on, right? Is that it started during HIV/AIDS epidemic, primarily with people exchanging, you know, clean syringes. And now encompasses a, a range of services, and it is becoming institutionalized to some extent, so I can address your, your question, Christine. But what I would say about harm reduction is that for years and years and years, it received almost no sort of public funding, right? It was very grassroots, very sort of shoestring and very kind of radical. And a lot of times, people were breaking laws to, to do this. And there's some kind of really interesting developments, especially in Canada, about, like, the next evolution of harm reduction, which I'll go into if we have time, but it's finally, like, because there's been enough research showing that it's profoundly effective at saving people's lives, there is slowly, right, and because of tireless advocacy, there's slowly becoming more support for harm reduction and, and more resources for it. And that's true in Oregon, right? Oregon, that was written into the law that, that they had to, they had to include harm reduction services and frankly, take a harm reduction approach for the, for the implementation of the whole measure, which was radical, because as I was saying, abstinence for so long has been the sort of golden, you know, objective, and, and now this is acknowledging that some people are not going to be able to stop using drugs. So how can we keep them alive and safe while they do use drugs? So, not unlike what happened with the HIV/AIDS world, as it's gotten more money, it's becoming more professionalized. And as it becomes more professionalized, it's becoming more medicalized. And as it becomes more medicalized, right, it's losing some of that original kind of grassroots flavor. And so there's a lot of debate in the field right now about how do we, how do you, how do you balance those things? On the, on the one hand, having the resources is absolutely critical. On the other hand, co-optation is, is a real threat. And I don't, I don't have an easy answer for that. I, I know as someone who works in policy reform, we're constantly having to weigh sort of visionary approaches like abolition against incremental policy reform, which decrem frankly is an incremental reform, right? And so, like, you know, I think you just do the best you can. One thing I would say is that around policy in particular, when we're making big policy decisions, we all, we always try to center the people directly impacted in those policy decisions, right? Because the last thing we need is people that are divorced from the issues, saying, hey, this, you know, we're going to make this very tough choice about an incremental change. Instead, sort of deferring to people on the ground, like, is this worth it to you? Is this worth it for you and your family and your community? You know, or do we need to hold out for something more visionary? That was a very rambling answer, but I'm going to stop there.
Great. Thanks, Jules. Does anyone else want to tackle this question of harm reduction and sort of improving conditions and abolition?
I mean, I think I would echo what Jules has just said. And it makes me think a lot about kind of abolitionist organizing in the language of, you know, differentiating between what is a reformist reform and what is an abolitionist reform, and really centering in those considerations. Kind of how do people live in the environments that we live in today, and how do we make those environments survivable? While also imagining and envisioning a future where we don't have to just survive the environments that we're in. So I think it is really about having that as the kind of vision, while realizing that we're still, we're still in the place that we are right now, and how do we take that, those steps towards that?
Sarah, anything you want to add about sort of how that relates to, like, improving conditions inside the prison and, like, reducing harm for TGI folks who are incarcerated and abolition? Like, how do you see those two working together?
Conditions inside and improving them. I mean, me, other organizations, individuals are fighting to change prison condition. However, I think the prisons, someone, I think, said, you know, dismounting on the prisons is not, I think somebody said something, but I do believe in dismantling in the prison system. I do believe it needs to start at the top with CDCR and the management, because the harm starts from there, and it trickles down until, I believe, for me, being incarcerated, that it starts with the individual and where they are, taking personal beliefs and just sticking to your professional and doing your job with the human aspect in it as well. But people come in, guards come in with their own belief system that cause harms. People coming in to teach causes harm. And until those issues are addressed, when people come from the skybox and get down on the field and see how dirty it is and what needs to be changed, then that's when it's going to change. But as long as you're up in the skybox and coming down, shooting down this and this and this, like, it's not going to change. And I have been in there when the higher-ups come through the prison and they want to make everything look like, hey, clean it up, do it this. And it's not like that. It's horrible inside, and the conditions are horrible inside, and that's why I'm a strong advocate for changing them. To me, it just needs to be dismantled, it needs to there's other, there's other options, but the conditions are horrible, and so the guards change, the higher up look down, and instead of throwing out policies, you know, look into what's going on. That's just what I feel.
Thanks, Sarah. I always love that. Thanks, Zaire. Always love that skybox analogy that you do. Um, Sarah, any ways that this shows up in reproductive justice work?
Um, I, you know, I think a few things are coming to mind. So, um, before Jules was mentioning sort of the, the transition from sort of more but from some modalities of harm reduction, we'll say, uh, from being like more community based to being more like institutionalized and medicalized. And it's, it's interesting because I think that like what we're struggling with in terms of reproductive health is trying to sort of move things in the opposite direction, right? Like, so when I started out, I told the story of how medicalization led to criminalization. And now I think we're in this moment of trying to like move things back and like de-institutionalize and de-medicalize reproductive healthcare. So that it's something that is not mediated by the state. It's not something people have to like seek permission from, you know, from healthcare providers, from the government to be able to access, but that it's something that actually belongs to the, to the individuals themselves. And then the other thing I think is coming up for me too is just like a little bit of, I don't know, like confusion or mystification around like what harm reduction actually means in the context of reproductive healthcare. And, uh, you know, we think that like there has been some resistance among people who've been sort of traditionally abortion rights or reproductive rights advocate to embrace a harm reduction approach. And I think a lot of that has to do with a sort of just like lingering stigma around drugs, around, uh, you know, people living with HIV or, you know, just a lot of like deeply ingrained stigmas that become parts of movements. So that people, you know, I think are resistant to the idea that self-managing and abortion, that, that, you know, that this is a key part of the ecosystem of people's reproductive healthcare. And they really see it as like, oh, well, this is, you know, this is a lesser form of healthcare that exists as a stopgap measure until we can get people access to clinic-based care. And I think that's like, that's something that we really want to challenge because people should be able to have an array of options available to them from the more self-directed to the more sort of like clinically mediated. And that, I don't know, I think if there were a greater acknowledgement that, uh, that harm reduction itself is, is a liberatory framework that it's about like having people be able to like thrive in the conditions that they're in and self-determine. I don't know, that we'd be able to better incorporate the idea that people can be in charge of their own reproductive healthcare and that they can rely on, you know, rely on themselves, rely on community members and not necessarily have this be something. But I, I guess maybe what it is, is that it would become, we would increase access overall by not limiting care to something that happens in like particular sites that are then sort of surrounded by protesters, or it can then be legislated about, legislated out of existence. So, you know, some things are sort of popping in my mind.
All right. Yeah, I appreciate that sort of like getting clear on what harm reduction means. Um. Uh, Zaire, one more question for you. So this came in and says, those of us impacted by systems of crime and punishment sometimes feel like there's nothing we can do to change it after experiencing how ruthless it is, which I think is what you were getting at in your last, your last response. So the question is, what helped you get involved in abolitionist work the way that you are now? And, um, what do you think that public health professionals need to do so that formerly incarcerated people can both participate and lead abolitionist work?
Um, I'm gonna have to ask you to repeat the second part. But as far as the, how did I get involved in the work? I believe for me, like this is kind of not like the platform to share it all on, but my childhood, like I said, I was incarcerated for thirty years, but prior to incarceration, from the age of maybe five to nineteen, I know I was trans and I was getting beat for being trans within my household, within society. And I didn't have a voice. At that time, I didn't have a voice. I just held a lot of anger in it. And it wasn't until I got incarcerated that the same system was going on outside, inside, I was still being abused. Saying, if you want to act like a man and all this and being slammed. And it wasn't until an individual told me that it's two ways to fight. You can fight physically and you can stay in here and perpetrate violence, or you can look up research, file grievances. And I just started filing grievances and whatever I seen wrong, I just kept fighting, fighting till it was like, you know, I was a nuisance. But I kept fighting and advocating and all that was already within me because always wanted, the voice started, started to come out. And I'm just an advocate, like if I see injustice, I'm just fighting. And like I said, the system is, is horrible. But if not one person reach out to try to change it, it's going to stay. So just being persistent, determined, passionate about, you know, changing the system one step at a time, that's just where I'm at.
Thanks. I don't know if you want to answer the second part, which is what do you think that, um, like people in public health need to do? Um, so that formerly incarcerated people can like lead abolitionist work?
What can they do? I'd just say provide better services wherever is needed. Like, why is it so hard to just provide services so it could make an individual holistically better in all areas? So, you know, just to provide, you know, services to make it better. I just simply have to just say that. Like there's a lot to come with mental health, you know, physical, it's a lot. But why can't we just have everyone just be okay? Even though it's hard, but just making sure that everyone's all right. That's it.
I was muted. Um, sorry, Zaire. Um, we're running up on the end of time, but there are a couple of questions left. I see Jazz, your question and working on your question, um, which I don't know, maybe if like Jules and Catherine specifically, if you have like a one to two sentence thought on this, which is basically like, what's, what, I mean, it's a huge question to answer in two sentences, but like what sort of liberatory things do you think can come out of academic settings? That support abolition specifically beyond just the researching pastoral systems harms?
I do feel like that's impossible to answer in two sentences, but I will say this, like, use your power for good, not evil, right? Like you have, whether we like it or not, you have credentials and power and access that other people don't have when you're in the academy. And so if you can use that as to open a door for other people to come through, right, and, and give other people a seat at the table, I think that's probably one of the best things you can do. But I, I absolutely think there can be liberatory academics in research.
I think I'll just add that, you know, academic spaces in these schools can also be sites of harm. So there is stuff that we can be doing on our own campuses that disrupt these systems of punishment. So, um, just to kind of echo what Jules has said and to just add that we can be moving in our own spaces to imagine them operating in kind of abolitionist and health-affirming ways.
Yes. I don't know how you both just said that in two sentences in one minute. Thank you very much. Also, if you have more thoughts on that that you want to email, I can send it out to folks afterwards. So thank you. Um, cool. We're up on time. Amber, if you can throw up the last slide, that would be great. Um, and while you do that, I just want to thank, thank you all, Farrah and Catherine and Jules and Zaire for being here, for like sharing your knowledge and your expertise. And, um, yeah, I think like you've opened up a lot of things that I'm going to definitely continue to be thinking about. And I'm just like really grateful for your work. I'm grateful you're all in the world's doing what you do. Um. Cool. So then the last thing I'll say is just our next session is going to be November ninth, so two weeks from now, same time, same place. And that's going to be, we're going to have some speakers coming in to talk about various abolitionist campaigns that they are working on, on their campuses. So you can hear about some of the efforts that are already happening on campus. And that's it. Well, thank you also to, thank you to Amber for helping run these slides and DJing. Thank you to Caitlin for captioning. And thank you to all of you for being here and engaging. See you in a couple of weeks.